Let's go ahead and wind down those conversations. Hopefully, if you got into a political discussion, you love one another still, showed each other grace within the body of Christ. It's important that we do that, all right? Recognizing that perhaps not everybody has the same shared political views, that we may have the same faith. So hopefully, that was helpful, but the idea is as Christians to be aware of some of these things that we have to constantly ask ourselves about the world in which we're living and what's going on around us and how we're called to live within that world, especially if perhaps we do feel persecuted or we do feel the heat is being turned up on the church in some way. It certainly reminds us that we're really blessed to live in a country where we do have the freedom to worship without fear, right? That we can gather without threat from the authorities. But it also reminds us of the need to remember those in the church who cannot around the world, you know, whether it is in China or Indonesia or places in Africa where the pressure is on them to conform to the society around them and to not remain distinct people. And so, but the flip side is it's hard for us then not to get to look too much like the world around us, right? To not get too apathetic, to not become too soft towards the call in our lives to live distinctly. So following Jesus isn't easy. Can I get a head nod? All right, let's go then to chapter 14. That's what we want to accomplish today. You should have the text open before you, maybe on your phone or tablet or Bible. I'm going to read the ESV version for us today. The title to this section of John's Revelation in chapter 14 is "The Lamb and the Hundred and Forty-Four Thousand." John writes, "Then I looked, and behold, on Mount Zion stood the Lamb, and with him one hundred and forty-four thousand, who had his name and his father's name written on their foreheads. And I heard a voice from heaven, like the roar of many waters, and like the sound of thunder. The voice I heard was like the sound of harpists playing on their harps. And they were singing a new song before the throne, and before the four living creatures, and before the elders. No one could learn that song except the hundred and forty-four thousand, who had been redeemed from the earth. It is these who have not defiled themselves with women, for they are virgins; it is these who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. These have been redeemed from mankind as first fruits for God and the Lamb; and in their mouth no lie was found, for they are blameless. Then I saw another angel flying directly overhead with an eternal gospel to proclaim to those who dwell on earth, to proclaim to those who dwell on earth, to every nation and tribe and language and people. And he said with a loud voice, 'Fear God, and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come; and worship him, who made heaven and earth, the sea and the springs of water.'" Another angel, a second, followed, saying, "A fallen fallen is Babylon the Great, she who made all nations drink the wine of the passion of her sexual immorality." And another angel, a third, followed them, saying with a loud voice, "If anyone worships the beast in its image and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink the wine of God's wrath, poured full strength from the cup of his anger; and he will be tormented with fire and sulfur in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb; and the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever, and they have no rest, day or night, these worshippers of the beast and its image, and whoever receives the mark of its name." Here is a call for the endurance of the saints, those who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. And then I heard a voice from heaven saying, "Write this down: Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on. Blessed indeed, says the Spirit, that they may rest from their labors, for their deeds follow them." Beginning at verse 14. "Then I looked, and behold, a white cloud, and seated on the cloud, one like a son of man, with a golden crown on his head, and a sharp sickle in his hand. And another angel came out of the temple, calling with a loud voice to him who sat on the cloud. 'Put in your sickle and reap, for the hour to reap has come, for the harvest of the earth is fully ripe.' So he who sat on the cloud swung his sickle across the earth, and the earth was reaped. Then another angel came out of the temple in heaven, and he too had a sharp sickle. And another angel came out from the altar, the angel who has authority over the fire; and he called with a loud voice to the one who had the sharp sickle. 'Put in your sickle and gather the clusters from the vine of the earth, for its grapes are ripe.' So the angel swung his sickle across the earth, and gathered the grape harvest of the earth, and threw it into the great winepress of the wrath of God. And the winepress was trodden outside the city, and blood flowed from the winepress as high as a horse's bridle for sixteen hundred steadi." Wow, that's a lot. That is a lot to handle. Okay, let's go back to verse one. You've got some information before you on page two of the handout. We'll go through this by those paragraphs and see if you have any questions. And then I've got some questions on page three that you can talk at your table about. So verse one, "Mount Zion, the place of redemption on earth and in heaven," right, where God and His Messiah rule and grace among His people. Mount Zion in this particular case is a heavenly vision, if you will, nothing earthly. You have got two references there that you can see, Psalm 2 and Hebrews 12 to. Hebrews 12, "The Great Cloud of Witnesses." After the horrifying visions of chapters 12 through 13 and perhaps chapter 14, John sees the Lamb, that is Christ and His people, together at Mount Zion. This is the second and last reference to the Hundred and Forty-Four Thousand, the other being in chapter seven. They are the church militant gathered at Jerusalem and just about to become the church triumphant, meaning just about to be martyred. Their mark of allegiance to the Lamb and His Father counters the mark of the beast. And so this, for all intents and purposes, verse one sets up the beginning of the end. The beginning of the end. All right, so let's walk through this, maybe tiptoe. Anything out of that first section that you have questions about? Yes, church militant, that is the church on earth, yes. I could ask John? No, I totally understand what you're saying, because Luther uses it in "A Mighty Fortress Is Our God," right, talks about the church militant. That is a church that is, I guess, I mean, hate to use this phrase, but it is at war, if you will, with the world around it. Whether that war is visible, but it's more or less an invisible war. One of prayer, one of good works, one of faith expressed in life to others, right? I mean, you know, if you looked at it in the context of being a visible war and you took the Crusades as an example, you would say, well, that was an absolute disaster. You know, the Crusades did nothing to spread the love of Jesus, right? Spread the sword, shed a lot of blood, cost a lot of lives, but did nothing to further the kingdom in the way in which the kingdom comes on earth as it is in heaven, right? Not by weapons of war, but by the word of God and the people of God. So militant then is more or less the spiritual warfare that we engage in as the people of God rather than the literal warfare that sometimes the people of God have engaged in. Yeah, that's a great question. All right, what else from verse one? Yes, absolutely, right? Those who look to Christ. You know, a great resource during the week that you could check out is Voice of the Martyrs. They have a website, a radio program, online presence, streaming, those kinds of things. That's a great Christian organization to check into. Where is contemporary persecution? Where are people standing up to the forces around them and confessing Christ even willingly to give up their lives? So Voice of the Martyrs, if you want to see that. Anything else from verse one, help you through this? Okay, verses two through three, "The new song is the song being sung in heaven since Christ's victory and ascension, but now learned by the victorious saints." The lyrics of the new song are in Revelation, chapter five, verses nine through 14. You went through that earlier. The thunderous harp accompaniment may be the harps of the elders in chapter five, verses nine through 14. You can flip over to chapter five if you want real quickly, and we'll look at those. How many of you love to sing? How many of us can't sing? Guess what? We're going to learn to sing, and we're going to love it. All right, verses, chapter five, sorry, verses nine, what did I say? Verses nine through 14. "And they sang a new song, saying, 'Worthy are you to take the scroll and to open its seals; for you are slain,' worthy is the Lamb who was slain; 'and by your blood you ransom people for God, from every tribe and language and people and nation; and you have made them a kingdom and priests to our God, and they shall reign on earth.'" And they shall reign, cue the Handel reference, right? Forever and ever. Yeah, so we're learning to sing a new song. Questions or comments on the new song? Keep in mind the additional references through Scripture about, "I'm doing a new thing." All right, God is always up to doing a new thing. Okay, Isaiah speaks a lot of this about God's new work that is coming. Behold, I am doing a new thing. And so we're looking for this newness, this redemption, this redeeming of things, right? It's just not, I mean, obviously, the resurrection of Jesus is critical, right? I mean, it's everything on which it falls, stands and falls. Paul says, "If Christ is not resurrected from the dead, then we're just wasting our time," right? But that's not the only new thing God is doing, right? God promises to raise us. God promises to recreate the heavens and earth, right? God promises to redeem all that has been lost. So the new thing is a song I think we'll gladly sing. All right, verses four through five, "Virgins," the gender here is male. Male or female, it represents our faithfulness and purity. "We follow the Lamb wherever he goes; we have been purchased by the blood of the Lamb as a first fruit sacrifice; we are not tainted by lies, but are blameless." Yes, it is hard to believe, but that's the affirmation, that's the joy, that's the security we have in Jesus, is this blamelessness that we are now seen as. The idea of virgins here is a little bit, like usually in Scripture, the virgins refer to unmarried women, but there's a couple of things that work. In ancient warfare, right, amongst those people groups who practiced that, there was a, before the warriors would go into battle, they would purify themselves by abstaining from relations for about a week or so, okay? So this would be one of the ways that they would consecrate themselves to their God as well as to their king whom they were following into battle, okay? Now, in that, in those ancient days, though, it would assume that the warriors had, you know, a wife or wives or however it worked within their, within their system, okay? This in particular is those who have never, okay, and have fully consecrated themselves to the Lord. So it's a little bit different from ancient warfare and the practice of warriors, but nonetheless, those reading it in John's day would have understood that John is referring, yes, to consecration, but he's taking consecration to a whole new level where these are men who have, who have never engaged in relationships and instead have remained consecrated to God, all right? No, 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 yeah. Tim asked about the, could this perhaps be like the celibate, celibacy? No, that comes later in the medieval age. It is, one of the references used is Paul talking about it's much easier not to be married if you're going to serve the Lord, because you're going to be divided between your house and the Lord's, your family and your church family. So that's just something that comes about in the Middle Ages, yeah. Okay, questions, comments on those couple verses? Okay. Verses six through seven, "The first of three angels announces the eternal gospel to the world, calling people everywhere to fear God, give him glory, and worship him. The gospel is as much an announcement of final judgment to the world as it is an assurance to the church that the good news of Jesus will continue to be proclaimed," right? Just a reminder that regardless of, I would say, you know, often in the church, sometimes we can get frustrated if we're working and working and working for the Lord. It doesn't matter whether you're a full-time church worker, you're a volunteer, you're a believer, whatever you're doing, right, you're doing for the Lord, and you're looking for fruit. You're wanting to see, hey, Jesus, can I, can I see if there's, that what I've been laboring after is bearing fruit for you and your kingdom? This is a reminder, just we got to keep on keeping on. St. Paul says in Inglatian 6:9, "Let us not give up in doing good, for in due time we shall reap a harvest of righteousness." Well, sometimes we don't get to see that harvest, right? Sometimes we're just planting, we're sowing seeds, right? Sometimes we're coming along behind someone who had been planting and we're watering, right? And there are others who, yes, have that privilege of harvesting at some point. But this in a sense is taking all that idea and then reminding us, even as we look towards the end, that all the work that the people of God have been engaged in over the centuries, the faithful work we've been engaged on is not wasted, all right? That it does bear fruit, because God gives the growth and God makes it fruitful. So continue to do it. If you find yourself frustrated or discouraged, if you find yourself sort of wondering, is it worth it? The answer is, well, that's kind of weak, let's go. Is it worth it? Yes, there you go, thank you. I'll tell Micah, y'all are a raucous crowd, right? New Orleans has nothing on the Prince of Peace people. All right, verse eight, "A second angel announces the downfall of Babylon the Great." Reference in Daniel, chapter four, verse 30, the same name. So John is continuing picking up on a theme which is already known by the people of God, and that is Babylon the Great. It's a symbol and one name for the beast we saw in chapter 13. In Revelation 17 through 18, which you'll, you'll get to eventually, maybe by the end of the year, right? "The same forces are depicted as a woman named Babylon riding a beast. She is a harlot, fornication and adultery, being metaphors in the Bible for spiritual unfaithfulness or spiritual adultery, might call, right? You have forsaken your first love," Paul criticizes the Galatians for, right? You in a sense, I mean, he doesn't say it like this, but you've committed spiritual adultery. You've returned to the law as a means of salvation. But this could be any, any number of ways in which people might be unfaithful, so. All right, questions, comments on that section of Scripture? So let me ask you this question. Feel free to answer. Why, why are you participating in a study on Revelation? Clarity, trying to understand it? Yeah, I really appreciate that hope, because so often when the book of Revelation is read, it's, it creates fear, especially in the way in which it's interpreted, right? And it's meant for us to bring us to hope. Now, there may be scary portions within the text in which we don't understand, and it's just as difficult for pastors to make sense of this text. But hope is really why we're out, thank you very much. The good Lutheran answer is both. So with the beast, which beast did you, I'm sorry, which beast did you reference first? Okay, that's, yeah, that's the political beast. So that's going to be, that's going to be the multiplicity of, you know, first, we understand it to be the Roman Empire. But then anything, any political entity that attempts to harm the church, yeah, so. Yeah, all right, thank you, yeah. It reminds me, you know, Christians across the ages have felt many times hopeless, right? There are lots of points of history that we could look at where the church felt, this is it. This is all over, Jesus is coming. And yet, the world went on, and people said, "How long, oh Lord, must we wait? How long, oh Lord?" Come, Lord Jesus, come quickly. So I'm glad to hear that within the text, you're finding hope, all right? You're finding hope because Jesus is in the text. All right, what else? Yes, sir. Yeah. Well, yeah, you know, both those, the JW's or the Mormons, they mimic Christianity. All right, those are two mimicking religions. But yeah, they, both of them have caps on the number of people, if you will. We're going to cap it at, you know, this, all right. So verses nine to 12, "A third angel announces the eternal punishment and suffering to come on those who gave their allegiance to the beast. Endurance is counselled for God's people." Again, there's that theme, endurance. I'll be interested to see if endurance resonates with our young people. Like, do they feel like they're under pressure? Do they feel like they need to endure? Or is that something we feel as we get older and we start to, you know, maybe become more cynical about the world around us and disappointed and go through life and things like that? So I'm looking forward to hearing more from the students and how they experience that theme and what it meant for them as God's children. All right, verse 13, "Unlike those in eternal torment, there is rest for the faithful." This is the second of seven blessings in Revelation. "The deeds of the faithful Christians follow them on earth and in heaven." All right, so whatever you do, again, it's not wasted for the Lord and goes with you. Not as a means to get you into heaven, of course, but as part of that heavenly reward. All right, verses 14 through 20, you've got multiple mentions of the sickle here. There's a couple of different sickles at work, though the English translation doesn't flesh it out for you. There's a grain sickle, and then there's a wine sickle, a vineyard sickle. The vineyard sickle would be a much smaller knife, because you're cutting the grape stems from the vines. But the, we all understand the larger sickle for the wheat field, for the wheat field worker. All right, "Christ appears with a sickle to judge the whole earth." Verses 14 through 16 depicts the judgment of both believers and unbelievers. "And the prophets, the grape harvests and winepress, resembles of God's judgment." Verses 17 through 20 refer to the judgment of unbelievers who end up outside the city. Hebrews 13:12 is the ironic justice of this reference, justice, ironic justice of this reference. The angel, verse 17, is the same angel with the fire of judgment in verse eight, who here enlists the work of another angel. Sixteen hundred stadia is equal to 184 miles, the multiplied squares of four and 10. So for those of you who like math, symbolizing an earthly totality, right? It's just an encompassing number. I did hear once a seminary prop tell me that he thought the new heavens and the new earth would be a complete cube. I don't know. I was like, you know, for people who love the flat earth, I don't know, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not too, I mean, for me personally, I don't, you know, I'm just, I'm just waiting on Jesus. Let's keep it simple, I'm just waiting on Jesus. So plus, I don't like math, so. All right, questions on that last section? What are we doing on time? Okay, got a few more minutes. All right, let's turn to the last page then. Some revealed truths, "God's people will learn new songs as they enter heaven." "Our lives can be seen as a costly sacrifice to God purchased with the blood of Jesus. Any nation, empire, or individual standing in the place of God is doomed to fall." And how we long for some of those governments to fall, I think of North Korea in particular as one nation that has brought their people to a place of worship of their leaders, literally. One way of looking at our time in heaven before the final judgment is to see it is a time of rest. All right, those of you who are excited about that, lol. Nice, dum bum. "What we do out of faith in Christ has a life beyond our own time. Again, encouragement for you as you labor on behalf of the Lord, however He's called you to. And real eternal torment awaits those who give their lives to anyone or anything but Christ." If you could write a new song for yourself or a loved one, here's, you can talk at your table. What would the lyrics be? Even if you don't feel yourself to be a lyricist or a talented songwriter or poet, I bet you could jot down a few things that you would like to hear sung. "What significance for yourself do you draw from knowing your life of faith lives beyond your own time?" We often see that when we have celebration of life services here, right? Especially when the grandkids get up and speak about the faith of the grandparent. It's pretty powerful, or perhaps maybe someone whom they were mentoring or a loved one. You love to see that intergenerational connection. Of course, I know some of you are paying for your grandkids, right? Because they're not going to church. And you're wondering, well, we raised them in a church. Why are they going to church, right? So you're frustrated and you're concerned, but you're not giving up on them. And importantly, But you're not giving up on them, and importantly, you're not giving up on Jesus. And Jesus' promise is not just to you and your children, but your grandchildren, right? And the generations to come. Who are, okay, well, then there's that last question, who are you praying for to come to faith in Jesus? So perhaps there is a loved one close to you, a coworker, a neighbor, someone whom you've known well, could be a neighbor who's moved away, right? You still continue to think of them. So I've been trying to get my neighbor across the street to come to church. They used to go to St. Andrews, and they stopped going at COVID, and they haven't been anywhere. And we usually, we've got, we've got a texting relationship. So he'll text me about, you know, baseball scores and stuff. He's a real sports guy and all that kind of stuff. And so he was leaving yesterday, and I was actually walking out, we were both out front. We were talking for a minute, and I said, hey, are you, you know, he knows I'm here now. I'm like, why don't you, why don't you and your wife come on over? It'll be a lot of fun. They're great people. And he's like, ah, you know, making all these hem and a haul and all kinds of stuff. Then he starts going in complaining about his children. Okay? And I said, well, come pray for your children then, you know? He's like, all right. So I'm working on them, but hopefully we'll get them here. So not that I want to steal sheep from St. Andrews, but, you know, if he's not going anywhere, right? We need to, we need to, we need to get him back in the works, so. Oh, sure, I bet, right? I know. Yeah, for those of you who love golf, I'm sure you're not checking your scores on your phone, the British Open. Yeah, it's like anytime Wimbledon comes on, Formula One, Premier League, anything in Europe that's happening, people are like. All right, I'm gonna, let's see, how are we on time? Okay, I got to close this up in prayer. If you guys want to stick around, obviously, connect, all right? Answer these questions if you want to. Write down maybe some new lyrics for yourself this week. Write down whom you're, who you're praying for and your circle of influence. And just continue to believe that God will work in their life, as he worked in your life too. So let's go before the Lord. Heavenly Father, we thank you that, again, we know the end of the story, and we find hope in the book of Revelation, not fear. So we just pray you'd continue to remove any anxiety that we might have about the world in which we live and, and sometimes the craziness we feel like we're seeing and experiencing. And help us to find rest in you, help us to find assurance in the promises to us in your Son Jesus, our Savior. And so we look forward to when we'll gather together with all the saints around the world and across the ages and sing a new song together. So stir up in our hearts of faith this week as we go forward, and Lord, may we put everything at your feet and give you the outcomes. We love you. Thank you for loving us, in Jesus' name. Amen.